All right, we're good. Okay, welcome everyone. It's been a while since we had so many folks in the gallery. So it's quite delightful to have so many people. Thank you for coming and I'm just gonna call us back to order. It is 6:30. The town of Smithers acknowledges the Get Em Dan Clan and the Watsoten people on whose unceded traditional territory we live, work and play. And the public is notified that this meeting is being recorded in webcast and notice if which is on the bulletin board outside these chambers. And council, you have an agenda for approval, please. Counselor Raven, Counselor Elliott, all in favor, any opposed and that is carried. Just before we start, I'm just going to take a moment on behalf of council and the town of Smithers to acknowledge a couple of folks who we do have in the gallery. And in a moment, I'm going to move out forward, but we have a couple of citizens who are tucked in the back there. Ingo and Jean Overman, who for years have made effort at making this a better place, have helped clean things, have noticed things that it may be a little bit out of place. And have contributed for a very long time to the betterment of this community and it's been noted. So we're going to take a moment now to invite Ingo and Jean up and just we have a little presentation. So please, if you don't mind joining me. Okay, well, I'm glad that we had a lot of people to share that with us. So thanks for being here. And now we're going to go back to the agenda. We have a couple of delegations. So first off, we have Mr. Kramer from the Bothley Valley Softball Association. If you don't mind just coming up to the delegation table. Absolutely. And so I don't know if staff went through that with you, but in the mic, there's a little circle there. So when your mic is read, you're on. Oh, yeah, please. Okay. And so just as a heads up, so I think everyone went through this, but you have about 10 minutes and then we have a couple of minutes for Q and A afterwards of council needs clarity over to you and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Dan Kramer. I'm the Vice President of the Bothley Valley Softball Association. This is our president, Noel. I was hoping to have Cole with us this evening. Unfortunately, due to some scheduling errors, he's not able to attend. Cole is the president of the adult softball or slow pitch. I'd like to thank first all of you showing up tonight. It warms our heart to see all of you here this evening and support of what we're asking of town council. And it's exciting to see our group come together like that. A few of them just came off the ball fields minutes prior to this meeting. So. So yeah, I'd like to speak tonight on behalf of our board and the many families, youth and community who use the Smithers Elk fields year round. I'd like to begin by recognizing the town's continued support and grassroots creation and safe inclusive community spaces. The purpose of this presentation tonight, we're here to respectfully request a concept of approval. And an approval in principle for the Smithers Elks facility field improvement master plan. The plan has been developed collaboratively with the input from coaches, parents, safety observers and recreational users. And it reflects both urgent and safety needs in long-term community priorities as well with town staff members. The project overview, the plan outlines. Sorry, on a phone here, but. The plan has been, oh, sorry, lost my spot there. The plan outlines a phased prioritized approach to improving the Alps field site, which plays a vital role in supporting youth sports tournaments, casual recreation and family gatherings. Improvements are grouped by priority levels. Highest priority, safety related field upgrades such as dugout repositioning, infield regrading and a sun shade on fields. Medium priority access paths outfield fence adjustments and protective netting. Lower priority and long-term enhancements include signage, central bathrooms, batting cages and power infrastructure. Alignment with the town goals. These proposed improvements directly align with the town of Smithers Park and Recreation Master Plan. Particularly the goals of creating safe, welcoming and accessible public spaces, supporting youth development and active lifestyles. Enhancing multi-use facilities that bring community together and many elements such as accessible pathways, safety netting and shaded viewed areas. Are consistent with age-friendly and barrier-free design principles. Safety first, I want to emphasize the top priority items addressed real observed safety concerns. Dugouts currently pose a risk of injury from throws to bases. The infield surfaces are uneven affecting play and increasing injury risk. And the sun glare issue on many fields makes pitching unsafe at certain times of the day. The community benefits. This is much more than sports. It's about creating a safe, inclusive space for all ages, abilities and backgrounds. The revitalized out facility will increase participation in local sports, enable Smithers to host regional tournaments. Strengthen community connections, attract future investment through sponsorship and partnership opportunities. The funding and the phasing, which everybody wants that master, where's it coming from? I already spoke with somebody establishing, we are not here asking for money today. Or should we ever be? We plan to use our resources to achieve that. We understand that public resources are limited. That's why this plan is designed to phase and scalable, allowing us to pursue grant funding. Community sponsorship, volunteer in-kind contributions. Your approval in principle will help us leverage these external sources by demonstrating municipal support. Back to the request, the request to council. We respectfully request, one, an approval of principle, the overall concept and the vision of the Elks facility master plan. Two, the direction to staff to explore support options, technical, logistical or funding alignment for the highest priority safety upgrades. Three, ongoing collaboration as we move into design, costing and fundraising phases. In closing, the plan is not just about improving fields. It's about making Smithers safer, more vibrant place to live and play. Thank you again for your time and leadership and I'll be happy to answer any questions or provide any documents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, questions or comments for the delegation? Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, Mayor Rachel. So seeing some familiar faces is always excellent. Obviously, this will come back to council at a later date for discussion, but I just want to say job well done, especially seeing all the next generation here tonight makes my heart so incredibly happy. I just want to say that the approach that you're taking and working amongst yourselves and with other community members to drive your idea forward is how we improve our community. And I just couldn't be more proud to see you all here today. So I hope you come back and hopefully we'll see some of you run for council in future years as well too. So good job, everyone.
Thanks, Counselor Patterson. Any other questions? Counselor Raven.
So I've noted that you guys have had significant growth over the last few years. About how many people are in the kids and the adult leagues in the valley?
Yeah, I can't, I can't speak for the adults, but I believe there is actively nine teams, eight or nine teams that are running in the adult league right now. And we are grand total was one, 155 roughly. We do have some kids that are accessing our program from outside of our community as well. So we, there may be a little more in numbers, but yeah.
Any other questions? Counselor Ray.
Well, I just wanted to say thanks. I mean, I play ball, so I don't want to, I don't want to taint the process, but thanks for bringing this, these forward. Especially the dugouts. I play first base and I'm not, don't play as well as I used to and I feel guilty sometimes when people get hit. So it's definitely, that's definitely overdue.
Counselor Patterson, do you see her?
Thank you, worship. I did forget one small request. In the planning process, can we make some consideration for waste management? It's just something that I observe when we're done playing games, just when I go for walks through there too, that we could just all do a bit better. But I think if we had just some consideration to how we would might do that. Yeah. Thank you so much.
Can I read?
Absolutely.
Response. Yeah. Thank you for bringing that up. That was actually something that one of our tournament coordinators recently through town staff communication was trying to improve that for our most recent tournament. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get that in time, but definitely moving forward, that is something on our list of things that we would like to see achieved in the upcoming years. Yeah.
Counselor Elliott.
Yeah, thanks. I was talking to Dan about playing ball back in the day. I haven't played a long time, but Frank's probably better than me. But I did, I do remember the last tournament that was here. There was a lot of people involved in that tournament, a lot of kids. It's good for our economy actually that so many people come to town, they go to restaurants and they stay in hotels. So I appreciate what sport does for the town. And actually, I don't play ball, but it was really exciting to see all the kids running around and being excited about sport. So thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Elliott. Just have one really relating to timeline or desired timeline. So Counselor Patterson already stated that, you know, we have a recommendation, a placeholder later in the agenda, just to ask staff to bring us some information back. But timeline is an important one for us if we're thinking about what might happen within the community, how we allocate our resources, which includes human resources. So just wondering if you have a best case scenario for timeline.
Yes, and thank you for asking, Mayor. Through our meetings with town staff in the spring, we really tried to identify the top priorities, medium priorities, low priorities. So realistically, there was a five-year concept plan that we brought to that meeting. And we tried to itemize that and through those meetings, we came up with this working document that now identifies it not based on time, based on priority of safety. And obviously, we would love for this to have already happened and thus made the cut for this program year. Unfortunately, that's not the case. But through the recommendation of town staff, we're here presenting today in hopes that our top priority is completed prior to next program year. So that is fairly tight timeframe, but that will do, be subject to your approval as well as the finances to back those things that need to happen. Town staff also was going to do some behind the scenes work to price out some of the top priority safety issues and then come back to us with the cost to do so. We've yet to get that response and I think that's because this meeting needed to happen first before staff were directed to, or needed to be directed to do so. But yeah, realistically, if you ask everybody behind me, they'd love it all next year. But, but we do recognize that we need to take some steps forward and the top priority being what we're looking at between now and the beginning of next program year. And beyond that, scalable financially within a five-year plan would be best case scenario.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ray.
Um, this isn't a question. It's just something I wanted to say that the softball players do appreciate the work that the town does on the fields. There have been several upgrades in the last few years. And so just, just to know that, just speaking as a ball player, we do appreciate that. And no, we're not, I don't think people are complaining about safety concerns because of anything that's been done by the staff. It's just design, maybe when it was designed, people weren't thinking about things like the entrance to the dugout being right behind the base. So definitely appreciate the staff work on the fields from year to year.
And just if I could add to that, sorry. And I said that at the beginning, but we really do recognize what the town's been doing. And, you know, we did see the new roof getting put on the bathrooms this year. There, there has been a lot of this behind the scenes about not seeing it. We do see it. And, and one thing that has most definitely changed is the current staff that we've been working with. It's a simple phone call and an email. I can't, I can't not compliment you in hiring Lauren and Sam and Will and Michael. And these individuals have played a huge role in helping get this to you as well, your, your, sorry. Your works yard, Dawn and, oh, Darren.
It's okay.
You're no, no, but they.
Naming people, you're gonna.
We've, we've worked through that in past years and not had the level of success we have with those relationships. And it, it's important that we recognize that moving forward, that that's helped make this process possible. So thank you.
Thanks for noting that. It's always appreciated. Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands. As I mentioned, we do have a recommendation from staff, which is really just that we allow staff to take the information and bring it back to us. So as I mentioned to the Overmans, you're welcome to stay with us for the duration of the evening. If you'd love to spend it here with us. And if you have something you'd rather do, we wish you to enjoy your evening, but it will be on the agenda again, once staff have had the time to bring us the amalgam of information. But thank you. Thanks for your contribution for the town and for being here and for bringing a nice big happy crowd. Really lovely. Thank you. Okay, and we have a second delegation this evening and I think I'm looking for Mr. Sharp, who I saw come in earlier. Oh, oh, right. Oh, I'm sure the kids want to go. Yes, you adults. All right, come on up. Hi, Ian, hi, Bev. So same thing, just there's a circle on the mic there. When you press it, your mic goes red. When it's red, you're live. And thanks for coming. So you've got about 10 minutes, and then we have a few minutes for questions. Over to you.
Thank you. Thanks to council and mayor for receiving this delegation. And I promise it's going to be brief. Alls I can say is I love what those guys are doing on the, on the softball. That's, that's amazing stuff. This ask isn't as colossal as what they're doing, but nonetheless, it's something that I'm fairly passionate about, as is Bev Dow, who is my neighbor on the Hilltop area. So again, thank you for giving us the opportunity to come and talk about Ranger Park and its place in the Smithers Park system. I'd just like to right off the bat, just note that this isn't about childcare. This is about Ranger Park and development in Ranger Park or potential development in Ranger Park. So Bev and I circulated a letter that we both agreed was something that needed to be done to get some input from, from people who use the park and in the neighborhood. And so it was composed and circulated for signatures to gain support for the delegation. And the, the letter's actually in the, it's in the package. But I just want to read the, the four lines at the start. It says, Dear Smithers, Mayor and Council, this letter is a request that you consider Ranger Park to be officially designated and named as a destination or community park for our community. As described in the 2024 Smithers Parks and Recreation Plan, Ranger Park is slated to be considered for one of these designations. This is to actually happen three years from the day the park plan was signed off, so it'd be 2027. We ask that this occur as soon as possible and offer support for that process. The letter also had about 10 lines outlining what the values, at least from our perspective, are of Ranger Park. But that was the letter. And so Bev and I, basically, along with a friend who, who actually got to a seniors luncheon, went looking for, for signatures for the, for the letter. And our process was to basically get them to read the, the very short letter. And we did this over about 10 days. We, we went to the neighborhoods in the park as well, with park users, and then, of course, the people who attended the seniors lunch. So that's where all of the signatures came from. And we got over, we approached over 200 people. The vast majority agreed to sign the letter. And so all of those pages are in the package. That's one of the things that's making it so thick, along with this incredible baseball proposal as well. There were a few that said no for a variety of reasons, but, but the vast majority were like, give me that, I'll sign that. So it was, it was heartening to see that there were many people who were of like mind. So, you know, the actual ask is to expedite a process that is already in the park plan. This, I've learned some things in, in approaching all of these people. The majority like the park as it is, obviously. And one thing that I was really surprised about is that the park is becoming a destination for disc golfers and others. So just to give you an example, I met disc golfers from Kamloops, Campbell River, Victoria, United Kingdom, which included England and Wales, California, and Florida. There was actually five people that were going from Florida to the Yukon, playing disc golf all the way, and Smithers was on their list. Others come to the park for the range of its values from surrounding areas. And just to give you an example, we had people signing from Telkwa, Hazleton, Kissauk, among, among others. So we asked the town to consider that an expedited process, to consider Ranger Park as a destination or community park. And the reference is to the 2024 Smithers Parks and Recreation Plan. In the interim, we ask that every effort be made to find alternative locations for proposed developments so that we get the, the research, we get the discussion among the community, the outreach, the engagement to better understand, you know, the incredible values and the amount of use that Ranger Park actually gets. Also, I honestly believe that in future, Ranger Park is likely to become more of an anchor for the park system. And that's because of the kind of recreation that goes on in there. It's a very broad base of recreation. So just a couple of other planning suggestions. I know I've never was a planner, but I'm going to take a stab at it anyway. It'd be great to, the way the plan is set up, document and the use and values of the park through data collection and meaningful consultation. I'd really love to see the creation of a 20- to 30-year-long view for the Smithers Park system and Rangers, Ranger Parks place within it. You know, if you just think about the new subdivisions that are happening around Smithers and, and surrounding towns, park use is going to become more and more important, and it's going to be harder and harder to find the lands necessary to satisfy the, the demands of the public for, for park use. So why not make Ranger Park all that it can be as a park? The last thing is, I think that these kinds of early assessments that, that we're advocating would be useful in the, in short-term decision-making for, related to land development across the board. Do you have any more to add?
Thanks, Ian. Nice to see you both. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Dow or Mr. Sharp? Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, worship. So Ian, it's so good to see you. And I just want to actually say thank you for all the work that you've done for my generation and future generations to protect the environment. But, yes, and I should say, I want to ask you a little bit about your vision for Ranger Park, because I'll confess, Casey, who just turned one today, my newborn son, I have to go back to work in five months and I have no childcare. It's harder and harder to pay the bills. I don't know what I'm going to do. It's scary. I'm scared. So the thought of the potential for a new childcare facility to open in a beautiful space such as Ranger Park, where, as you know, we have older buildings and, in my opinion, some space, because I concur with you that there's not a lot of space. I got really excited about that. I thought, what a beautiful space for a child to play. Maybe I'm biased, because I'm, you know, I want my son to play there. But I'm just curious, you've been here for a really, really, really long time. What, what is your thoughts for Ranger Park?
Well, when, when the proposal was, was, was not granted by the province, the, the news release said that the town would look for alternative locations. And, you know, I mean, I, I take the town at their word. You know, if, if there isn't any other location and it has to be in Ranger Park, what I, what I would ask is that the footprint of that facility and the parking area, especially the parking area that was in the initial design, the, the footprint be minimized. You know, the part of looking at Ranger Park on a map, you'd go, wow, that's a big park. A goodly chunk of it is actually a very steep hillside. And so the usable area of the park is not near as big as it looks like on a map. So then one thinks, okay, well, then how much would the usable area have to forfeit for, for such a building and parking? And so I, I would ask that if it has to be Ranger Park, because you've looked and done all your due diligence on other places, that a design minimize the, the, you know, how, how it would affect the, the various values and uses of, of the park as it stands. I live across from the park. It looks like about four out of the 12 holes for the disc golf course would no longer be viable. And in talking to some of the folks who actually use it more, the locals, they're thinking, well, you know, that really does take a big dent in the opportunity to play that game in that area. I don't know that they would absolutely walk away from it, but there'd be an awful lot of traffic just across that one green space closer to Main Street. So it's a question of finding a balance. And I agree, we need more childcare. And I really hope that there's a way to do it in a way that, you know, doesn't cause the level of detriment to the park that I foresee at this moment, the way the, the plans are set. I know we need childcare.
Thanks. Anyone else? Um, okay, I'm just going to say thank you for the thoughtful approach. I think you covered a lot of things in the way you presented this to us. And I know that this has caused angst. I mean, it's caused a lot of excitement. The, the thing that you said we're not talking about, but it, it lays in the background, of course. But we do have an opportunity now to think about the future. We have a request from you. And as I mentioned to the first delegation, we have a recommendation later on, just to actually ask our staff to support us with this, the, the specific request that you have for accelerating the process and what we're going to do with Ranger Park in the future. Personally, I do like the statement that you made on consideration of use and values. I mean, you're talking about Ranger Park, but that applies anywhere in the community. And just echoing what you know, what Counselor Patterson referenced, land is a premium here, and it is one of our problems. And I would offer to anyone in the community to assist us with good thinking in that. We're feeling that pressure, and you can fill in the blank for anything, whether it's, you know, recreation space, housing space, trail space. Smithers is a fairly small community when we draw a line around it. And so almost anything we think of that we would like to expand in the future will be a challenge. And there are lots of good thinkers in the community, and this, this is one of those wicked problems that we're going to have to work through in order to gain the best use out of the land, get the highest purpose for the land that we've got with all those challenges. So, but thank you for the presentation, the thoughtful approach. It'll come up later in the agenda, and at some point we'll come back to council. It's tough, I've had some time. But Ian, we see you and Bev downtown, so anytime you've got a thought, please share. Anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. So where we're at actually is item six. If there is anyone in the gallery, excuse me, I wanted to speak to an item on the agenda. This is your moment. Okay, and I'm going to move on. Okay. So we do not have a public hearing, and so council going to eight, one, we're in the minutes. So the minutes from June 24th for adoption, please. Counselor Ray, Counselor Patterson, any errors or omissions? All in favor? Any opposed? That's Carrie. Eight, two, special open on June 17th for adoption, please. Counselor Raven, Counselor Elliott, any errors or omissions? All in favor? Any opposed? And that's Carrie. And eight, three, committee, the whole, June 17th for adoption, please. Counselor Patterson, Counselor Raven, errors or omissions? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Now we're at section nine, items released to the public. Mr. Schroder?
Thank you very much, Mayor Rachel. Two motions were released from the in-camera this evening. The first is respecting the Northern Development Initiative Trust, Northern Healthy Communities Fund, Human Resources Capacity. And this was, that council approves the application to the Northern Development Initiative Trust, Northern Healthy Communities Fund, capacity building to fund human resources capacity for three years, and that appropriate financial resources be committed to fulfill the town's financial contributions for the grant if successful, and that council approves staff to proceed with hiring a human resources employee if successful. The second motion was that council recognize Ingo and Jean Overman, Smithers residents, with a certificate of appreciation for their long and impactful volunteer service to the community, and that a bouquet of flowers be purchased out of the council contingency.
Thanks, Mr. Schroder. Okay. We're moving on. Next up is council reports. We have regrets from Counselor Bukema tonight. Counselor Elliott?
I attended the Canada Day festivities, was basically rained out, but it was still fun. But that's all after report. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Elliott. Regrets from Counselor Leonard, although I think she's still hoping to join us. She is delayed in travel today, so she's inching her way toward us. Counselor Patterson?
Just something very special to report, your worship, if I may, that my son Casey turns one today. And I'm not sure how long we keep these records, but my hope is one day when he's older and we laugh, he has no choice but to be born into public service. He sees this and knows that I love him very much and know that he is well-loved and supported by everyone at council and in this community. And yeah, I'm just so proud of you. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Patterson, and happy birthday to Casey. Counselor Raven?
So there is the minutes from the APC meeting, and then my report is in as well. I attended the Canada Day festivities and then also Midsummer Music Festival. And I'm always just blown away at the amount of volunteers it takes to make these events happen. And everyone shows up and everyone always pulls off such an incredible job. So just, yeah, thank you to everyone in the community for making Smithers sparkle.
Thanks, Counselor Raven. And I'm just making sure I got this right. We're going to deal with the motions later on in the staff reports. Okay. I think it's you, Counselor Ray.
Nothing to report, your worship.
Thanks, Counselor Ray. My report is there. Yeah, other counselors have commented on the event, so on Canada Day and Midsummer. Again, yeah, I actually wanted to give kudos as well to our staff for the Canada Day event. It takes some time and organization out of this organization, and it was really grand. And so maybe some of you around the table were a part of it. I recognize some of you that I saw there. But otherwise, please pass on. Thanks. It was a really lovely event, and it takes a lot of time. And I just wanted to say thank you to our staff, lots of other volunteers there as well, but recognizing that we had town staff that worked really hard on that event. So thank you. And it was fun to be at Midsummer. And just letting council know and community, I guess, tomorrow is the official opening of the Dome Mountain or Gavin Mine. And so I will be going out to the mine tomorrow, seeing what it looks like. So looking forward to seeing what that operation looks like. I'll report back. All righty. And if we can skip then to the 14s. So 14, one, we have the recommendation from delegation one. So it is a recommendation from staff that we direct staff to report to council with more information regarding the BB Softball Association's delegation request. If I could have a mover and a seconder, Counselor Patterson, Counselor Ray? Any, any discussion or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried unanimously. And then 14, two, the delegation with Mr. Sharp and Ms. Dow, that council direct staff to provide a report to council with more information regarding the delegation request. To this side, Counselor Raven, Counselor Elliott, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. And then 14, three, we have a letter, looking for a letter of support. Somehow that always seems awkward. Recommendation for a letter of support to Zellcamp Friendship Center Society for an NDIS grant, trust grant. Counselor, are you moving? Counselor Patterson, you're reciting. Any discussion on this one? All in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried. 14, four, report from Ms. Bearman, who is with us, and- 14-4, report from Ms. Bearman, who is with us and. Sometimes the titles are just too hard for me. Change of views, change of budget request. For passenger data and workforce gap analysis. It's a good report. I'm sorry to tease you about the title. That's not your fault. With two recommendations there. Counselor Patterson.
I'll move both, Your Worship.
Moving both. Okay, I'm doing a seconder, Counselor Raven. And Ms. Bearman's here. If there's any questions or clarity, Counselor Ray.
And just a question of what's gonna happen with the workforce gap analysis is that, are we gonna bring that forward in future years?
Ms. Bearman.
I'll continue to look for funding and as soon as funding becomes available, I'll bring it to council to inquire if we can apply for their funding. But it was quite important that we do do a workforce gap analysis within the next five years.
Counselor Patterson.
If I may, Your Worship, for those who like to tune in, could we just provide just a very brief highlight or overview of what the workforce gap analysis is?
Ms. Bearman.
It would be hiring consultants to speak to the businesses within town. And find out what staff they are, they're battling to find. And then also working with the colleges to find out what courses they can potentially provide to be able to match. Education with staffing requirements. So there was one down in the regional district in 2019, 2020, but also the whole region. So we wanna have one that's more condensed for Smithers requirements only.
Thank you. Any other questions? And then just so I'm following this bouncing ball, we are still talking about proceeding with the airport leakage. And catchment data study, but that's where we're at. Okay, cool. Ready? All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. Thanks for the work on the report there, Ms. Bearman. Okay, we are at 14-5. Report from Mr. Smith. Regarding the development permit amendment application for 3739 Fourth Avenue. Counsel, what's your pleasure here? You're moving the whole thing. Okay, Counselor Raven moves. Counselor Elliott seconds. Any discussion or queries for staff? I have just one sort of a general question just with changing up parking. Mr. Allen, if you don't mind. It's just a concern about how we manage retaining on-street parking. So when I looked at this, it looks like the original proposal was supposed to have five parking stalls in the back. And I don't think there are. And I'm just wondering, I couldn't find that piece, how that changed. So now there's fewer in the back, but we need them up front and it takes away the on-street. Can you help with that?
Yes, I can speak to that, Mayor Ratchell. So the project did complete the five parking spaces in the rear. And their access from the rear lane. The three spaces in the front were. I guess an afterthought, but during construction, it was noted in the report, the building was set back. An additional, I think, four or five feet, 1.2 meters. And that permitted enough room to develop the parking in the front. So the owners then identified that that parking would complement the uses. And provide more. Just easier access for. Persons visiting the doctor's offices. The doctor's offices are on the main floor and the residences, I think there's three on the upper floor. So it was a nice split that way on the parking and as far as on-street parking. That is still considered public parking. There's there. You know, up to this point, our staff, the town has not approved on-street parking for. Exclusive use of the business, the adjacent business or the owner. So the request for the 15-minute. Parking space that that has been a typical request from all. You know, private clinics and health services or support services and the town, it's been a long. You know, request and approval process, just operationally with staff to. Install those spaces. The owners pay for the signage and. It's known, it's known that the 15 minutes, you know, duration will not be. Strictly monitored by the town. We don't have the resources for that, but it's a message to the. To the users of the facility that this is just a drop-off pickup zone. So it doesn't count as off-street parking for the business. It's still considered public. I think that's the main message there.
Yeah, thanks. I'm just gonna go back because this might be where I misunderstood the park in the back. And I'm looking at the letter that came from Dr. Neathammer. And it says, it's the second last paragraph, and it says, due to the limits of only having three spots that back out under the road. Is that, what is that referencing then? I mean, it probably doesn't matter so much, but that was my confusion. I thought that was only the three. And I guess I just, you know, I'm not going to. I won't spend too much time on this. I just have a general concern about expanding the drives for businesses. To create parking on the lots that then takes away on-street parking. Like, I think we're gonna be in trouble. So this is just, this is just one piece. Because we don't have a replacement for on-street parking. So I respect that the businesses have to have the parking. I understand why people would wanna have that 15-minute spot. But it's just one more piece as I look at some of our side streets and see the widening. And it's happening in some residential subdivisions too, where the driveways are getting wider to accommodate more vehicles. But it's at the cost of on-street parking for everyone. So if someone chooses to come downtown, park a vehicle and walk to wherever, those spots are over time being whittled. So it's just sort of a general observation and I don't know if we have any way of gauging that when. We look at an application that takes away on-street parking. And I appreciate they're being replaced within the private lot, but if someone were coming downtown to go wander or go for coffee, they probably wouldn't. Park at the doctor's office, but they could use the on-street parking if it was still there. So I just think we're kind of getting into a bit of a dilemma where we're going to have to look at these requests more broadly. And I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, Worship. So I have sort of a comment and then also a question for staff. But I'll confess, when you first started raising concerns about parking. I sort of maybe didn't appreciate them as much as I do now, living downtown. And I would just say that I've noticed more and more how horrendous I feel the parking is in downtown and actually how unsafe it's becoming. Especially where I would say like alleys sort of intersect with those main streets or even the crosswalks, which I noticed is. A condition of this particular report, you know, even for example, today, driving, I know it's embarrassing that I drove to Town Hall, how close I live, but I did. And there was a giant semi parked at one of the crosswalks and I just stopped because I thought if there was someone coming. I'm not gonna be able to see them and the more I think about parking and how often we talk about it and how. All the near misses that I continuously see, I would love to see us have maybe potentially community the whole added to. The growing list of conversations that we wish to have around parking, just because I feel it's getting to the point where it's incredibly unsafe. Especially when we look at little kids in the summer, biking more downtown. So I would support having a more fulsome conversation. And to that point, Mr. Allen, I'm confused by recommendation A. And I'm just curious, how, how does an owner enforce something? Like that or is that ultimately up to the town? And if so, should we put it as a recommendation?
Mr. Allen.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Ratchell. So just to, I guess, finish the discussion about taking away the on-street parking. Yes, it's true that the eight-meter-wide driveway will take away about a space and a half. Our standard length for on-street parking is six meters and it's an eight-meter-wide driveway. So it does take that away in, in the sense of creating the three private spaces on the front. Yeah, the part, the recommendation A. It's just really a reminder to the owner. And staff felt that this was worth including as a condition on the development permit. In the amendment that. The owner reminds all of its either residents. Or the users of their clients, I guess, to not block the public sidewalk. It won't be constructed during the construction of the parking spaces. But it will be constructed in the future because the cash and lube process was selected during the original development permit. It is definitely something that the town would or does regulate on a regular basis. If there are vehicles blocking the sidewalks. It's just simply the fact that a driveway crosses the sidewalk. And it's just a reminder that, you know, the driver should pull forward far enough. So that they're not blocking that sidewalk. That's simply what it's about.
Okay. Any other questions, Counselor Ray?
So I'm not sure on the parking site plan. I'm pretty sure it's just the way the symbol for a letdown is drawn. But is the letdown actually the full eight meters letdown or is it six meters of letdown and a little bit on either side?
Yes, it'll be the full eight meter width. Yes.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of a couple of incidents that I saw on Facebook and another place where people are driving down the sidewalk. Because the letdowns didn't quite match. I just wanted to say, I mean. If we are losing one space of on-street parking, but. I would imagine that that has still three spaces where people can park instead of parking on the street. So, you know, to me, it's in that gain of two. It's not, I don't really look at it as a loss that way. Since we stopped requiring parking down parking lots to be provided. That's when the off-street parking and we knew it would be, starts to get to be a bit of an issue sometimes. One thing I just wanted to ask, especially on, wow, it'd be the right side of, right-hand side of the drawing. Is there any way that we can prevent somebody from, say, planting a tree? Where you can't actually see when you're coming out, similar to Counselor Patterson. There's a couple of places in town where there's trees parked, planted kind of right on the sidewalk. And you actually can't see when you're pulling out. So I'm quite concerned about that in this. Because people are either gonna have to back in or back out of these. You can't drive in and drive back out unless they're not occupied. So I'm just a little concerned about that blocking of vision.
Mr. Allen.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Ratchell. Well, the. Private trees are required to be on the private property, not, they're not allowed to be planted in the boulevard and. Of course, trees that are currently in the boulevards, they're town trees and they're maintained by operations and parks. And their canopies are maintained up high so that it doesn't impede that, that safe. Visibility for drivers. If this was a exterior lot at a, at a corner or at an intersection, they. There's a safe site triangle that requires no vegetation be placed there. But yeah, it is difficult to regulate interior lots as far as. And you're right, we can't stop, say, the neighbor from planting a tree right on their, just inside their corner. The corner of their property line. But under the property maintenance bylaw, we can request that the. Trees be maintained so that they're not producing or. Yeah, producing a safe, an unsafe situation for the users of the neighboring property. So they can't, it's kind of a good neighbor policy and it is stated in the bylaws as well. That what you do on one side cannot impede the safety of the other side.
Thank you. And I have been on council long enough. I remember that being enforced, actually, so.
Alrighty. Any other questions or comments? Okay. And I did want to note, despite my sort of general concerns about parking, that it is a lovely development downtown. And I think the proponents have done a very good job. I think we're just coming to the point where we're gonna have to deal with the parking issue. I'm gonna call the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried unanimously. Okay, we are at 14-6, report from Mr. Allen. This is nice. Someone's donating us money for the cycle 16 paving. I don't think I've ever seen a report like this on the agenda before. So there is a recommendation that we accept the donation for the paving. If someone would like to put that on the floor, Counselor Raven, Counselor Elliott. Any discussion? Counselor Patterson.
I think Your Worship, just a quick question through to staff. Will it be our responsibility as the owners of the fall fair grounds to just add a signage there? Just to let folks know that there's gonna be pedestrian traffic crossing the road, the access road?
Actually, the trail will meet Pacific Street or it meets Pacific Street and then it's. Expected that there will be, will not be any crossings of Pacific Street if that's what you're referring to, Counselor Patterson. So the idea is the, you know, on Pacific Street, the cyclists would use the shoulders. Or the, or share the lanes with vehicles. So there wouldn't be any crossing.
If I may. I guess I just have concerns because I know that that corner is actually quite blind. So my concern is that if cyclists are just coming like to the grounds. Because they're quite well-loved and used. I just wanna make sure that people are safe. So I don't know if it's something that we could refer. To the Fall Fair Management Committee for discussion or maybe I'm overthinking it, but maybe I'll just leave it for now and we can talk about it later.
Yeah, I think since it's so fresh, maybe we'll just see how it shapes up. I mean, it looks amazing and it's being well-used. Mr. Allen first and I'll vote at Counselor Ray.
Yeah, thank you. I was just gonna mention that there will be, I believe there will be an additional bollard placed at the end of the trail. To, because we're following the same standard, safety standards as the cycle 16 design. And that automatically requires the cyclists to slow down. As before they approach the street. And yeah, that's always an issue if. And that will be assessed as well if there are any traffic safety concerns for that corner coming up from the fairgrounds.
Counselor Ray.
I was just gonna say that I believe when we put that through that the bollard was there because the Fall Fair Committee. BVA through the Fall Fair Committee had requested it and it makes, it makes it very hard for a cyclist to come. For lack of a better word, flying out of there. So, and the speed limit down there, I believe is. Still only 30 kilometers an hour as well, so.
Thanks, folks. Mostly, I just wanted to say thank you. This is amazing and I hope we send a little thank you card or I can send a thank you card. And, you know, I was down at Midsummer on the weekend and people were using that trail and I had feedback from people from out of town. Who commented on how amazing it was to be able to be camped down there, hop on their bikes and get into town, stay off the highway. And one person who accompanies a person on a mobility device was able to get from town to the fairgrounds in a completely safe way. And it's just an example of when they're built, sensibility of them becomes so clear because people hop on them right away. So thanks to our folks who were a part of this and the work that went into doing Phase Zero, as it's lovingly called. And to all the volunteers and the people who worked on getting this path done. I think it is really well received by the community. All right. Are we ready to vote to accept a donation? All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. Thanks, folks. Okay, we are at 14-7, report from Mr. Shibley on the CN Water Main Replacement. And the award of the management, management award. With a recommendation. Counselor Raven moves. Seconder, Counselor Elliott. Any discussion? Counselor Ray?
So it's not so much about the recommendation, just about the plan. So it's not so much about the recommendation, just about the plan to abandon the old line. I'm a little concerned that part of the reason we're abandoning the line is that it may fail. And without water in it, what, what steps can we take to avoid it collapsing and causing an accident in the rail yard or?
Mr. Allen.
Yeah, thank you, Mary Archwell. Um, that will be, um, fleshed out during the design. And there are pretty strict requirements by CN for any abandoned lines under the tracks. Um, it will likely require, um, filling the line with a, a lean concrete. It's basically pumped in and then sealed off at each end. So that's likely what's gonna be required. So that will eliminate the, a- any future chance of collapse.
Thank you.
All right, ready to vote? All in favor, the opposed, and that's carried unanimously. It's sort of great to see these projects going. Lots on the books this year. And fourteen-eight, we have a report from Ms. Bearman on the Minerals North Conference Organizing Committee. And a couple of parts here that we accept the terms of reference. And that we talk about the council representatives. And I just have a note here, probably council have seen it, just that Counsel Leonard was, um, really interested in this. She's been attending them and is pretty interested in being a part of it. So I just wanted to put that on the table since she hasn't made it here yet. And counsel, your, what's your pleasure with this one? Um, Ms. Bearman is here to help if we need her. Counsel Ray.
Just, um, I know you had also mentioned, are you okay with being the alternate?
Yeah, I mean, I can pop into any meeting that I want to, the joy of being mayor. So, and I, um, I, I don't, I don't think I was the only one, but I do know that because Counsel Leonard isn't here to speak for herself, that she was particularly interested in this committee. So just wanted to at least put that on the table, so. Uh, Counsel Patterson.
Thank you, worship. So I might just look for your direction if staff are looking for a motion this evening. Uh, do you feel confident that it would be appropriate to appoint, uh, counselor or shall we defer until she is?
Maybe we could. I think we can. Uh, she's expressed interest. So, um, the things would be just from the recommendation here to do the first bullet, like do the terms of reference. And then the second one could be, um, you know, to, uh, appoint Counsel Leonard as the council representative and then the alternate, if we've got the alternate. I think that's, that's fine just to insert the names into the motion.
And you wish them to be separate motions? I'm looking.
Doesn't matter to me. We just better.
Okay.
Know what we're moving.
If I may, I'll go ahead. Okay. Uh, that council approved the twenty-twenty-six Minerals North Conference Organizing Committee Terms of Reference as presented and that council appoints Counselor Laura Leonard as a representative and Mayor Gladys Atral as the alternate for the twenty-twenty-six Minerals North Conference Organizing Committee.
Uh, Counsel Ray, was that a second? Okay. Is there comments, questions? Anything that we need to know, Ms. Bearman? Any surprises? Not yet. Okay. All right. Good. Okay, all in favor, any opposed, and that's carried. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Counsel Patterson. Okay, and fourteen-nine, report from Ms. Chandran. And this is the temporary use permit, the top application for thirty-eight seventy-six, Second Avenue. And we have the proponents with us with the recommendation. Counsel Ray?
The recommendations.
All of it. Okay. And Counsel Patterson, you're seconding it all? Okay. Any discussion? We've been looking at this one for a while. I'm just gonna call the question. All in favor, any opposed? Carried. All right. Thanks for hanging in. See ya. Nobody wants to stay with us for the whole evening. Thanks, Beth, for hanging out. Okay, we are at fourteen-ten. Okay, um, from Ms. Chandran again, uh, developed variance permit for thirty, number thirty-seven at Hudson Bay Mountain. No, Hudson Bay Mobile Home Trailer Park. Okay. Counsel Raven moves. Counsel Elliot seconds. And discussion, Counsel Ray?
I, I was just wondering through to the staff, um, if we're, we're doing this setback for the trailer. Is there any reason that we would need to just put in a clause or amendment saying that it only applied to the trailer? Um, is there room on the lot for them to say build a, as a shed or something or an addition that further encroached? Or is this kind of gonna be it?
Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mary Archwell. If I understand the question, um, it, it will just apply only for the new mobile home. That is, that will be placed. And, uh, yeah, no addition would be, um, approved on this trailer because it's already encroaching into this, the side setback. Yeah.
Good. Um, just sort of as curiosity with the changes, if I understand this right, in mobile home design, like what are we looking at with that park or actually any of our parks going forward? Because they're all old designs. I mean, this park in particular is a very old park. Is this gonna be, is this what we anticipate? That each new mobile home will require something in order to make it fit in these old lots?
Yeah, that's a bit of an unknown at this point. Um, I know we've had a proposal from this mobile home park owner, uh, several years ago about an expansion area which could be available for some of the more modern, wider mobile homes. Um, but as these older ones are replaced, if they are the wider variety and modernized variety, I think as long as they have the fire protection built in, which you don't see in any of the older mobiles or trailers, that's, that's the issue here is, uh, so, and that's what is being required in this case. I think, um, we can accept the, uh, smaller side setbacks in the future if, if the, uh, fire protection is in place. Yeah.
Alrighty, thanks. Mr. Allen, if you don't mind, just make way for us. Welcome, Counsel Leonard. Thanks for persevering to get here.
We're at fourteen-ten.
Yeah. Okay, if there's not any other questions, we'll, uh, call the vote on this one. All in favor, opposed, and that's carried. Okay, and we're moving up to fourteen-eleven, which is the report from, um, Chief De Vries on Emergency Disaster Management Act Indigenous Engagement Funding with a recommendation and Chief is here to help us with that. Counsel. The whole thing. Okay, seconder. Counsel, someone, Counsel Patterson, thank you. Okay, uh, Chief, is there anything you wanted to add or speak to with this?
Sorry, just fighting with my mic there. I almost lost the battle. No, unless there's specific questions, I think the report's fairly, uh, yeah.
Okay, clear. No problem. Okay, counsel, any questions? All right, all in favor, any opposed, and that's carried unanimously. How you doing, Counsel Leonard? You're okay? Because you've had a long day. So as you're catching up, we're at fourteen-twelve. And I'll just inform you that you have been, um, appointed by council to the Minerals North as the council designate, so. Alrighty, so fourteen-ten, now we have the report from Mr. Smith on the hydro geological study for the snow dump with the recommendation. Counsel Raven moves. Counsel Elliot seconds. Discussion, Counsel Ray?
I was just wondering if the, uh, hydro geological study is going to include the impacts of the fire training center as well?
Mr. Lawrence, I see you moving.
Through the mayor to Counselor Ray, w- we're looking at doing additional work outside of the hydro geological study on baseline studies for specifically the fire training center. So that's gonna be outside the scope of this work, but we're looking into that as well. And multiple sites, not just the fire training center, but other areas as well.
Yeah, I didn't mean to pick on the fire training center, but there are some retardants and stuff, so.
Okay, thanks, Counsel Ray. Anyone else? Okay, all in favor, any opposed, and that is carried. Already, we are moving along. We are at fifteen, the report from Ms. Westburg for information on staff vacancies. And we don't have bylaws and we are right up to the eighteen's. If there's anything folks wanna pull out of the eighteen's, just let me know. Call out your numbers. Counsel Patterson?
Eighteen-one, please, your worship.
Okay, anyone else? So, um, I had circled eighteen-two and eighteen-three. If there's someone else, we'll just start at the top. Uh, Counsel Patterson.
Uh, thank you, worship. I just wanted to acknowledge, um, everyone who's actually written in, um, just around their concerns related to taxation. And just to confess that my understanding, um, isn't as strong as I would like it to be when I'm, uh, looking at some of the concerns that have been raised specifically from the business community. So I just wanna say that I look forward to, um, the upcoming, um, budget planning process just to understand, um, what other municipalities may or may not be doing and looking, um, at how, uh, we're setting rates. Um, because I just wanna recognize how much, um, our local small business economy contributes. And just, at least just having a conversation about what's possible. Um, so I just wanna thank everyone for taking the time to write. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Patterson. Counsel Ray?
I just think, you know, a little of, of this is also, you know, we, we haven't looked at the rates. Because we thought we had found a good balance and then the assessment started to kind of mess with that. But just knowing that if we do that, then we might be asking P I R to pay more. We might be asking residents to pay more and I've never heard a resident tell me their bill was too low either. So just, just knowing that, I mean, I think we do need to look at it. Um, but the letter that we sent, um, to the finance minister, I think, should maybe start a conversation just about how the whole thing works. Nothing against B C assessment, but i- it is really not. Overall, it's probably fair, but it, there definitely every year injustices probably that are being done, um, to residents to, you know, P I R lost another heavy industrial and they're the only heavy industrial. Those kind of things are hard to plan for as a business or as an individual. So hopefully, um, going forward, we can be part of the conversation to, uh, improve things.
Thanks, Counsel Ray. Anyone else? Okay.
Sorry, eighteen-two, I'll recuse myself.
Okay, we're going there now.
Because I own shares in P N G's current company.
Okay. Alrighty, um, I noted this partly, uh, because I forgot to check earlier. So I'm just gonna ask staffer if anyone remembers. Uh, so we, we did make note of this and we invited a delegation. And it's my understanding that P N G has now made a plan to come here. Okay. Okay, that's probably good for now and then we can talk about any follow-up action once we've heard from P N G as a delegation. Is it the next meeting? Are they coming in July?
That's correct, Mary Archwell. It will be during the July twenty-second. Uh, at least that's what we have planned. Uh, things could always change, um, based on, uh, P N G's availability.
Okay, perfect. That was really the reason for my pulling it aside. If there's nothing else, then we can get, um, Counsel Ray back. Thanks. Okay, and I, I pulled up the next one. Um, again, this is gonna be a bit of a question to staff. When we're talking about Crown Land airports, I just wondered if there was a, you know, a connection between this, this, um, letter and resolution from Oliver that relates to us with, sorry, I'm not being very elegant in how I'm asking, but it's talking about Crown Land airports. And wondering the difference between our Crown Grant airports, I guess, Mr. Schroder.
Thank you very much, Mary Archwell. Um, certainly I haven't looked in too closely to the situation of the town of Oliver with respect to their airport, but just, uh, from a cursory grant glance, it looks like, uh, they built their airport, um, on some type of provincially crown granted land. Um, the province had put stipulations on what type of uses, uh, would be permitted on the airport lands themselves. Um, so that likely some, that's likely something that's affecting their ability to lease out lots, um, similar to the way that the Town of Smithers does at our airport, um, to businesses of certain types of uses, just ultimately affecting their revenue. Um, in our case with the Town of Smithers, um, we own the, the actual land itself. Um, so we're in a substantially different position where we have, uh, much broader control over what we can do uh, with our, our airport lands.
Thank you for the clarity. That, that's it for me then. Okay. I made a note on eighteen-four, just nice. We got a response that was quite nice to Mr. Schroder's letter, so that was good. And that's it for me. Is there anything else from anyone? All right. I think we are, just help me, we're gonna go back to close, adjourn this.
Recess to closed, uh, under section ninety K.
Okay, uh, a motion to recess, back to blows under ninety K. That was Counselor Patterson and Ray. All in favor, any opposed, and that's carried. Okay. This part's done and we'll take a few minutes and reconvene.